Everyone is on. I have my face, have a camera and screen there. Everyone's here.
The stream is going live. Can you give it about five seconds and then I think you can begin?
Thank you.
Yeah, it does say live, perfect.
Good evening and welcome to the January 12th, 2021 Northern London School Board meeting. I call this meeting to order. This meeting is being recorded. Thank you for joining us virtually this evening. Please know that all webinar community member participants will remain on mute during the meeting unless they have put in a request to speak during the public comment period. Those wishing to make public comment were asked to submit that request by four o'clock this evening via email or online form. I would like to announce that the board met in executive session on January 12th immediately before this meeting to discuss personnel and confidential legal information. Mrs. Martin, may I have a roll call, please?
Yes. Gray?
Here.
Erdman?
Here.
Fowler?
Here.
Marlo?
Here.
Murray?
Here.
Klein?
Here.
Tackelik?
Here.
Nom?
Here.
Bucks?
Here.
All members present.
Thank you.
Welcome.
May I have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Again.
Is there any discussion? This is a unanimous roll call vote. Your vote will be recorded in the affirmative unless you say nay or I abstain. The motion has passed. We move on to item D. We have several presentations this evening. The high school students of the month for January are Hannah Porengic and Dylan Lambert. This award is sponsored jointly by the Fredericksburg and Jonestown Lions Club, and each recipient will be recognized at a future meeting of the Lions Club. The middle school student of the month for January is Evan Adams. This award is sponsored by the Northern London County Rotary Club, and each recipient will be recognized at a future meeting of the Rotary Club. Congratulations to those students. Our next presentation is our student board representative, Aileen Zemba. Do we have? Yes, we do.
She's here. You're muted. All right.
Good evening. Student council has been meeting resume every Monday at 6:00 PM. We worked with Ag to have a food drive. It's my first period class one. First period, yeah. And for a prize, we get donuts. Senior, senior class one, the class fours. But overall, teachers brought the most coats in and won the coat drive. Individual gift cards are being awarded to students who participated in the spirit week. We're planning another staff appreciation to give gift bags to teachers and aides. Unfortunately, the student, the King of Hearts dance was canceled due to the pandemic and stuff. But we are still trying to raise money for charity and will be holding a spirit week this week. Yeah, not this week. It's in the morning this week. We're putting together our video bios for both homecoming and King of Hearts court members to be posted. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Aileen. It's so great to hear that despite the challenges this year that you guys are still doing lots of great things. Our next presentation is our audit report from Crowley and Halloran.
Very good. Well, thank you. If we could share the screen. We've got a little abbreviated presentation for you. I'm Pam Halloran. This is Mike Crowley. All right, there we go. Okay. So the first part, go ahead, Mike.
Oh, sure. Thank you. So we always like to go through the auditor's report. Since that's the main thing that we contribute to your financial statement, so we kind of go through the explanation. So that first part of the report details, of course, the financial statements that were audited. The second part talks about management's responsibilities for the financial statements. The third talks about auditor's responsibility and kind of gets into an explanation of what an audit is and what standards we're using when we do a school district audit. The opinion that the district received was an unmodified opinion. That's the highest opinion we're allowed to give. So graduation. There's also some other paragraphs in there. There's a report about other matters and explains what procedures we used as far as the management discussion analysis and supplementary information that's included in the financial statement work, what work we did on that. There's also an explanation of other procedures we conducted on the accompanying schedule of expenditures of federal awards. So that's in there as well. There's another report called the Yellow Book Report that's required by government auditing standards. It gives kind of a, lets a reader know that that's included as well. So that's the first part. Then is included in the financial statements is the management's discussion analysis section. This is prepared by management and it kind of talks about things in a narrative format as more than just numbers. It also gives you comparisons of two years' worth of data. And it also gives some graphs and charts for visual aid. So we always suggest that if anybody wants to get a good understanding of what took place to get in and read that. I believe in your, in your bound report, that's pages four to 14.
Next slide. It is a condensed statement of net position. So that gives you a nice visual of 2020 against 2019.
Right. And as you can see, they're pretty similar. And so that's what we expect to say.
The next slide. We just, we discussed some highlights there. So your total assets and deferred outflows were 41.9 million. Your total assets are 34 million, which was a decrease of about 38,000 from 2019. There's deferred outflows and that was down 1.6 million. There were total liabilities of 73.4, which those went up about 2.3 million from last year. And also there's a category called deferred inflows. They are up about 986,000. So did you want to go into that at all? So that, that does leave us within that position, which is a deficit. And it's 33.7 million. Last year's reported deficit was 33.5 million, and that went down about 253,000. So on these government wide statements, this first view of statements, the, there's, there's liabilities on there for the other post-employment benefits and for the pension, which that's what's driving that decrease.
For, so to understand that, again, all your assets are included, so your fixed assets and all your liabilities, the bonds are included as well as Pam said, the, the OPEB liabilities and of course the pension liability. So in Pennsylvania, the pension fund is not, is about 53% funded. So that's causing, that funding is causing a large liability to show up on your financial statements. So you're, every year you're getting that lower and lower, but it is not a hundred percent funded.
While the OPEB is funded.
Yes, you have a good OPEB. Your OPEB's in good shape.
So if we go on to the next slide, we can see kind of a visual of the expenses from comparison from year to year and very, very similar. You can see the breakdown there.
And this next slide is, kind of gives you an overview of what the statement of activities talks about. Statement of activities is similar to an income statement in a business entity. But for a government, since the government is providing a function, in this case, education, the expenses are all shown at the top. And those are the net functions and programs. And then you need to raise revenues to be able to pay for those expenditures. And so the expenses are on the bottom and obviously the largest one being property taxes and state aid and federal aid. So that kind of gives you an idea of what that statement looks like. We'll get into some of the details on the next slide. On the revenue side, this shows you the government activity revenues. Again, same picture as we've seen before. Property taxes are purple, making up the largest segment. State aid and grants is the next. And you can see that as well. And operating grants that the district receives is the next largest item. The next slide, kind of we go through that statement of activities a little bit. So your general revenues decreased about 377,000 from the year before. You had total general revenue of 30.7 million. So a small decrease in revenues. Property and other tax revenue decreased $82,000. Interest income decreased 102,000. Grants and entitlements increased 148,000. You had miscellaneous that decreased 340,000. And when we look at that, the difference between the net cost of function and program, so the programs the district puts on, at 31 million and general revenues with 30.7 million was a decrease in that position of 253,000. So when you're talking about these larger numbers, to have a decrease of 253,000 is minimal. Last year, there was an increase of 412,000. So pretty close. The next set of statements is ones you use to run the district. So that's your government statements. And these are the statements that are by fund. So we have the general fund where most of the activity takes place. You have your proprietary fund, which is the school lunch fund, which you run the school lunch and breakfast programs through that. And then if you had a capital project going, it'd be a capital project fund that has transactions in it. And the debt service fund, if you have any transactions going through. Those are the main funds that we have. The general fund had a fund balance of 4.3 million. That's a decrease of about 551,000 from the prior year. Capital fund had some activity going through it, but it only has a $30 fund balance. And so no change from the year before. Debt service fund has zero fund balance, but it did have transactions going through it. So just like we have a statement of activities here, we have a statement of revenues, expenditures and changes in fund balance. So in the, in the general fund, we had an operating deficit of 551,000. The prior year was 87,000. I believe if you went and looked at your budget, you would have seen that you budgeted for a deficit of somewhere around 600,000. So really, really close to what you had budgeted for. The capital fund, we have a track refurbishing project that went through there. So 434,000 was spent on that project and that 434,000 came from the, a transfer from the general fund. The debt service fund, as we said, doesn't have anything in a fund balance, but it does have transactions. So we paid 1.35 million of principal payments and 410,000 of interest payments on our bonds. And of course, that money is coming over from the general fund. So the general fund sends it to the debt service fund. The debt service fund makes those payments.
The next slide, we give you a visual of the food service fund. So the red tracks the expenses and the blue tracks the revenues. And we can see a nice turn there for the current year where our revenues were above our expenses. So some highlights there on the next slide. Our cash and equivalents were up $420,000 over the prior year. And our due to general fund was also up about 24,000. So the cash had actually been sent over from the school lunch fund over to the general fund. And that's the reason for that. The total net position is now a deficit of $206,000, which is a positive swing over the prior year's deficit of 602,000. We have about 33 and a half thousand tied up in our capital assets, net of depreciation. And we have unrestricted deficit left over of about 239,000. There was a transfer over from the general fund. So this was a planned, a plan to send over funds to reduce that deficit that had accumulated over several years. So we had the same as, as last year. Overall, the food service fund had a $397,000 gain. Last year was 225,000. So after the same 300,000 subsidy. So a positive turn in the current year over the prior year. So that gets it, that's it for the statements. There's other schedules and statements in there. There's statements that reconcile the government wide approach to the fund balance approach. So if you want to see how we get to those, the government wide, all the adjustments that are made, those are detailed there. There's also fiduciary funds, statements that are in there. And then we get into the notes. So the notes explain the financials. And note one is always a really big note because it has the significant accounting policies. So capitalization policy, we always like to, to point that out. It hasn't changed, but it shows what, what threshold you have for depreciation. And then there's the counting standards that were adopted and any new standards that are upcoming. And those are detailed in your, your PDF of the financials on page 35. So some standards were actually delayed due to the COVID pandemic. So those will be implemented next year. Capital assets are on note six, page 40. And that details what was purchased in the general fund and the school lunch fund. So that gives you a good idea of the ins and outs.
The debt note is note seven on page 41 to 43, if you're in your, the bound financials that we had provided. So that talks about the district's debt over the year. District paid 1,350,000 principal on bonds during the year. There was a net increase in compensated absences of 156,000. And the healthcare retirement benefit had a decrease of $5,000 in it. And those are all related to long-term debt. And then one of the largest notes is the pension note. Note eight, pages 44 to 49, details the pension plan, obviously the Peasars pension system. This is your district's little chunk of that system. And the district's share of the liability is $51 million. Your OPEB liability, what's called the post-employment benefits, starts on, is note nine, pages 49, 58. That, that again is a large note. It's similar to the pension note. And that, that's covering the post-employment benefits for both your current employees of the district and the retired employees of the district. So that, that's all disclosed there. And then there's two chunks of that. One is money that the district provides through, again, through the Peasars system. And also then the district has its own OPEB liability that's detailed as well.
And then there's other supplemental schedules in there that deal with the budget. So the revenues and the expenses and shows actual to budget, final budget. And then there's also a bunch of schedules detailing that the pension and the OPEB. So those are required supplementary information. And then we get on to the federal awards program because you receive federal dollars. We do what's called a single audit. So there's a schedule there of the expenditures of the federal awards. That's two pages. 70 something. And we're also doing a couple of other reports there that we talked about in the beginning. So we're doing a report on the government auditing standards. And there we look at our internal controls over financial reporting and we report on compliance and other matters. So you had, no deficiencies were noted there. So that's what we do. We look at our internal controls over financial reporting and we would note if we had any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses, which we didn't. And then there's also a report on the major programs. So this year we looked at the child nutrition cluster, which is your breakfast and your lunch program and also your commodities. So we look at the compliance with the, the certain requirements that you have to meet. And we look at the internal controls over that. So happy to say again, we had no findings. The next slide actually describes what those would be. So deficiencies in internal controls, what would be significant and what would be material weaknesses. So if we had significant or material weaknesses, those would be noted in this report. So very good news that they are not there. There were also a couple of other letters that we give you, a board communication letter. And that details our responsibilities, significant accounting policies, accounting estimates, if we had to make material adjustments and if we had any disagreements with management. So we would let you know there and of course we had none. We always have a very good audit and a lot of cooperation and we love coming there. And.
We're pretty much finished. If there's any questions, we'd be glad to try to answer them. We moved pretty quickly through that, so.
Quickly for us.
We didn't want you to be stuck listening to us for the entire meeting. So thank you for letting us present over your Zoom meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your work and for that report.
And board members, the copy of the presentation and the audit itself, it should be in your email inbox. And it's a PDF this year, so a little more handy to read through for you. Again, did you have anything to lay in? Congratulations again. You know, love to hear the highest marks and no problems on the off. So thank you for your hard work.
Thank you. No, I have no additional comments. Thanks. Thank you, Pam and Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll sign off. Have a good night.
Thanks. You too. Moving on to the next item on our agenda, our superintendent's report. Dr. Messinger?
Yeah, I have actually a few things tonight. The first thing I'd like to discuss is I didn't, I did have to be out a little bit before Christmas break. And we didn't wrap up some things we wanted to, but we're back working on the vision and long-term planning. We had a great committee meeting, I thought, in December. And our, our leaders are currently working on goal statements. We believe we have some dates for a new, a meeting with committees. I'll be discussing that with leadership on Thursday and then we will send out invitations for that. Already have gone through the vision survey. And it was, it was great because there were some things that stood out, I think, on the survey. There's some parts of the, of the old statements that people like. And yet there's some, some new things. There's some things that aren't part of statements that I think people would like to see as head toward in the future for the district. Actually had someone take a stab at a draft of a statement already. And we're going to give that to leadership and I'm gonna, I'm gonna send it to you guys too. If anybody's good at crafting those, you're willing to take a shot at that. And we can then put a couple of different ones together and take a look. So toward the end of January, we'll be looking to get back together. And I thought we had some great discussion and good feedback from that. But we're ready to get back together again and go through and start to set some goals and prioritize those goals. Wanted to draw your attention to one of the reports that's done every month. It's the charter school report. As we were doing some internal things that, you know, we continue and I give Kirk, who's running the show right now, behind the scenes, a lot of credit as he works through some of our programs from a technology standpoint. And one of the things that, that has come to light was the way we calculate charter school students. Basically, in the past, we've waited for us to be billed by charter schools. And when we receive a bill for a student, that goes on the list of students. And that doesn't necessarily account for everybody for a number of reasons. One, at the beginning of the year, not everybody bills at the beginning of the year. Some people wait till the end of the quarter or halfway through even in December. So that creates a problem that our number isn't exactly, isn't where we should, where it's supposed to be. And two, we actually have some kids that go to charter schools that don't bill us, that go for free. And it doesn't include those students either. And so we have revamped that. So you'll see a difference in the, in the charter school numbers. It went up, which honestly, I was surprised when looking at it before, that it was only a difference of five or seven. This is more in line with what the county saw with the pandemic. So it doesn't surprise me. But it's a change and a more accurate change, I believe, in how we calculate. And I appreciate the business office and Mr. Reese helping us work through that problem and Kirk looking at that and trying to make some corrections there to how we do our accounting. But anyway, I wanted to get that to you because there is a jump from the last month to December till to this month. Also, wanted to talk a little bit about attendance. We had some growing pains with attendance in the pandemic as well because you're now taking attendance. Are they here physically? Are they here virtually? Are they absent virtually? Did they get on virtually, but then they got off? So straightening that up in terms of, we wanted to be very lenient this year in terms of, you know, kids get on the internet, doesn't work. Whether it's a home problem, you know, once Google went down in one day, things like that. And, and so the attendance thing has been a very, it's been difficult this year to get a grasp on that. We, we believe that we have kind of reset by putting together letters that, that do go through and, and look at attendance issues that maybe we can't explain, whether the doctor's note didn't come in or whatever. Sending letters home, but, but I want to, I just want to reassure that if parents get a letter and they think, well, we, you know, we explained that, we were at home, we were trying to get on, we couldn't get on, or whatever it is. We gave them a way to contact us and we're going to be pretty understanding with that. Now, we also want to make sure that kids that are just not coming to class, you know, we've accounted for that too. And we're making sure that we get on them a little bit to get here. So again, want to, want to thank Kirk and the secretaries and everyone that's been helping with that problem and getting that straightened down. Also want to talk about the bond a little bit. Leanne is preparing a PowerPoint that she will send to you. She's going to get that to you by the 22nd of January to give you some time to look through it. As you know, the Act 34 hearing will be in early February. And then we'll vote on the booklet and then that will go off the public comment. And really, we believe that, you know, in March is when we would probably do the bond. But we want to take one last look, give you one last look at the ramifications of this bond and sneak peek, you know, if we do pursue renovations here at the middle school, high school. So she's preparing, she's working on that and we anticipate getting that to you by the 22nd. Finally, I want to congratulate Rusty Wallace, who had his 200th victory all here at Northern London over the weekend. And wrestling's a little bit different right now with everything going on. I know in our gym, we don't allow spectators so we can spread out. But he got his 200th win, so congratulations to Rusty. And finally, I don't know if you realize this, but it is school board appreciation month. And, you know, I don't know that I fully understood the commitment that the school board makes. I know that I pick up my phone and call you guys at all kinds of hours and on the weekends and you're all, you're there. You're texting back, you're answering phone calls, you know, we're emailing constantly. And for people that don't get paid to do this job, you work off the card. And for people that don't get paid to do this job, you work awfully hard, and we want to show a little bit of appreciation for that. We couldn't couldn't get you through tonight, but Pat's going to hold up something. Wants you to stop by, hold up, yeah, there we go. It's a top, it's got an embroidery Northern London School District and a Viking on it, something you guys can wear to when you come around or just, you know, at home. But got you something to pick up next time you're in, for whatever reason. Grab that, and that's our little gift to you. But thank you very much for your hard work and everything you do for the district. It's much appreciated. Any questions on anything I just went through? Okay, that's the end of my report then.
Thank you, Dr. Messinger. And I think I speak for all of us when I say it's a privilege and a pleasure to work along with you and the rest of the district. Is there any old business for discussion this evening? All right, then we will move on to our items for, oh, I'm sorry, I skipped over the public comment period. Those wishing to make public comment were asked to submit that request by 4 o'clock this evening, but we did not have any requests for public comment today. All right, now we move on to item H, that is our items for board action on the consent calendar. That includes items one through 22. All of these items were discussed at last week's meeting. May I have a motion to approve items one through 22 on the consent calendar?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? This is a unanimous roll call vote. Your vote will be recorded in the affirmative unless you say nay or I abstain. The motion has passed. Now we move on to our discussion items. That is item J. We have two items of discussion for this evening. The first item is a resignation. Dr. Lessinger?
Yes, a resignation of Melissa Bonney, Jones Town Municipal System. And I'm happy to say she's going to pursue a teaching certification, and best wishes to her as she does that. And then also a settlement agreement between the district and the parents of the student. Oh, I'm sorry. Did you want to take one at a time?
Can we do both of them at the same time?
Yes.
Okay, all right. May I have a motion to approve items one and two on the discussion agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second. Is there any discussion? This is a unanimous roll call vote. Your vote will be recorded in the affirmative unless you say nay or I abstain. The motion has passed. Now we move on to our reports from our representatives. The first is our Career and Technology Center, Representative Director Klein.
I have nothing to report this month.
Okay, thank you. Then we move on to the intermediate unit, Director Murray.
I also have nothing to report this month.
All right, and last but not least, we have our Legislative PSDA Liaison, Director Satale.
Nothing to report this month.
We do have a couple of dates to remember. January 18th, school is closed. This is Teacher in Service Day. Our next committee meeting is February 2nd. Also listed on the dates to remember is February 3rd, that is our Act 34 hearing date, that will be at 6:30. As long as we are able, though, that will be held in the high school auditorium, and we will reflect that in the minutes that, as long as we are able, that will be held in the high school auditorium. It will be live streamed either way, but we do hope to be able to welcome people into the auditorium for that. And then February 9th is our next school, our, we have a school board meeting on February 2nd, and then February 9th. Is there anything else for the good of the order this evening? May I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
May I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? This is a unanimous roll call vote. Your vote will be recorded in the affirmative unless you say nay or I abstain. The motion has passed. Have a good evening, everyone.